Good morning.
Good morning. And welcome to the Tuesday, August 26, 2008 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the role?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eustafian.
Here.
Mayor Grayman.
Here. Mr. Kasakian, could we hear your report?
Agenda for the August 26, 2008 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 21, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Before we begin, I want to make a statement of welcome and a few comments to help set the tone for where we're going and as well where we may not be going. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for attending this morning and for those looking in, thank you for viewing, for taking an interest in your city government and for your desire to make Glendale a better city. In particular, I'd like to thank Chief Randy Adams for making himself so available to me through the unusual course of events which have taken place over recent weeks. And I would also like to thank the public for attending the study session, our city staff, and in particular my colleagues on the Glendale City Council, who seem to have proven once again that there is no issue too difficult or controversial to attend to and to address when the better interests of our city are the subject. I know that my council colleagues share my adoration, I shouldn't say, but admiration was the word I was looking for, for the sworn and unworn men and women of the Glendale Police Department, their dedication and their professionalism. So let me take a moment this morning to clarify what we are doing here today at this study session, what our goal is and why this discussion seems necessary. To begin with, let's sort the fact from the fiction with regard to why we are here. For those of you whether inside or outside of local city government who believe that there is a battle being waged between the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Police Department or the Chief of Police Randy Adams, let's lay that matter to rest right here and now. That is not the case. Before calling for this study session, I spoke to Chief Adams to inform him of my reasons and concerns in asking for a discussion about whether there is a need for a police advisory panel or commission, namely that numerous issues had arisen involving his department, which, true or not, were beginning to create the perception that matters related to certain lawsuits, investigations, and accusations needed to be aired in a public arena so that no inference could be made and no false impression fabricated that this council or our department were sweeping any issues related to accusations of police misconduct under the rug or that we as a city council or Glendale Police Department have anything to hide. In short, I asked the chief, as I asked the public and the staff and my colleagues, to join together in a hands-across-the-dais approach to making a determination about the necessity for a police advisory board. Chief Adams has assured me that he and his staff embrace this introspection and that he and they stand ready to contribute to and assist in the orchestration of this process. I have stated that I am not sure that I would support the formation of such a panel myself. However, I believe that it is essential that we as elected officials remain ready and willing to ask ourselves these difficult questions. For starters, is there an element to the relations between our department and the citizens of a variety of ethnicities, races, religions, et cetera, which needs improvement? Are the accusations we have heard expressed by individual citizens, community groups, and even our own council members on occasion, are they being adequately addressed through an existing process? Is this process working? Is it sufficient in a city as diverse as Glendale? And do our citizens have confidence in the existing procedures and processes? If so, then our course of action will be somewhat direct and succinct. If not, or if there is doubt, then I believe we require an examination of a process to move this city and our department forward to such a place of certainty and clarity. So today, our discussion is about this very word, process. And so with that, I will turn now to our city manager, Mr. Starbird, for his input and his direction on process.
Have you read it in the record yet?
No.
Let's do that.
We'll do that, and then we'll go to Mr. Starbird.
Item for consideration today is City Manager's Report Regarding Director of City Council's Staff on Consideration of a Process for Engaging the Community in a Discussion of the Formation of a Police Advisory Board. And before you is a motion providing direction to staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you and good morning. First and foremost, in preparing for this meeting, frankly, your staff has worked at not attempting to manage it to really any extent but to focus on what you encouraged the council and the community to do, which was to have a discussion about the process. Toward that end, what I've done in the staff report for you is merely to pose some questions that might be helpful in focusing your decision-making. I did that through three questions about how you would like to proceed, if indeed you desire to proceed, with engaging the community in a discussion about the benefits or advantages of forming a police advisory commission. There in your staff report, I'd be happy to touch on them, but I think most important is to allow the council now and the community members that are here to get into that conversation about whether or not you want to proceed with a process. If so, then we can certainly get into some of the questions that we'd like to have direction on. Put that back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me go to my colleagues before, we do have some speakers, so let me go to my colleagues first, see if there are any comments before we go to the public, and then we'll come back and talk about process further. Mr. - Sorry, go ahead. Mr. Najarian.
This is, I think, a difficult exercise to only talk about process and not get into the merits and the needs and the issues that face the city and the department. Are we in any violation, Mr. Howard, if we get past process and we get into, I know that we have a problem today with such and such, why can't we do something about it? Technically, we're straying past process. I mean, process to me means how often shall we meet, who shall be involved in the meetings, how shall we get community input, notice, perhaps a framework of time. Where can we go, where do we have to hold back the reins?
I think there is some connection between the merits and process. For example, one thing that might lead you to a process are the merits of some of the questions that have come up and some of the issues that have been raised. The question really is how far, and I'm not going to be able to tell you that until we see it. But I think it's, there obviously would be a limit. If you start straying too far into the merits, then one would claim that they haven't had adequate notice under the Brown Act to be able to come here or have the opportunity to come here and present their position or to hear and be part of the council deliberation. But I think certainly some limited discussion or some limited comment about the merits to assist you in working through the first, the preliminary question, do you want a process? And second of all, what would that process be, it would be appropriate.
Mr. Eustafian and Mr. Quintero.
You already answered my question.
Oh, okay. Mr. Quintero.
Well, and so obviously we can discuss whether we really feel there's even a need to get to a process to further examine.
Mr. Weaver, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Then let's go directly to the public and start with the speaker cards, and then we'll come back. First speaker is Herbert Milano, followed by Al Hoffman.
Good morning, Mayor Grayman, members of the city council and city staff. My name, my name is Herbert Milano. My personal experience with individuals, individual police officers, detectives, or spokesmen of the police department has always been very positive. They have demonstrated to me a significant amount of dedication, professionalism, and exceptional courtesy. I personally have benefited from that professionalism and dedication. I think that this experience that I have had is an experience and an opinion that is probably shared by many residents in Glendale, that we have an exceptional police department and staff. And as a result, many will think that there will be no need to have any type of suggestions with regard to a potential police commission or a police advisory commission. But I'd like to advocate for precisely such a commission, in fact, an independent commission for the following reasons. And I'm going to bring to you four issues that have occurred during the past eight years. The first one that comes to mind is the issue that occurred with regard to the police building. This is a project that was supposed to be completed in about two years, and three years after its deadline, it was not completed, and it went $5 million over budget. The question for a police commission in this case would have been, was the individual that was selected for this particular project qualified and how was he ever selected to basically manage a project of this type of complexity and scope? I actually have the captain's name in here within my documents.
Go infer it.
Yes, Captain Sutford, I think it is, yes. The second issue that I think would be, would have been excellent for a police commission to take on was the issue of the lawsuit of Frankie versus the city of Glendale. And this was a sexual harassment lawsuit that started before the chief was hired, but it's an issue that basically was settled a couple of years after he was hired and that cost the city $7.1 million. Now, this alone by itself would have been sufficient and a necessary and sufficient reason for us to have a proper and formal independent police commission. The third item that I want to bring up is the issue with regard to the involvement of the police chief during the discussions of the town center and a document, a mail-out that was sent out, that was paid by Caruso, in which the police chief took sides. I don't know the reason why he felt compelled to basically be involved in this, but it is an issue in which it was a political issue that fragmented the city significantly. That type of involvement should have been an issue that would have been taken up by an independent police commission. Since that time, we have had other types of lawsuits or potential lawsuits having to do with police conduct. Some of these issues have basically have not come up before you, and actually, at least one of them was never really presented even in the Glendale news press, and that has to do with a police shooting incident that occurred. I want to mention to you that at no time have I felt that there is a lack of professionalism with regard to the staff or individuals, or that we can count on the police department to basically follow through exceptionally well on the issues that we personally have to face. But I think that every department needs to have a certain amount of accountability, and that is the reason why we have all these commissions. My goal is to promote a police division that by any performance measures be established as one of the top ten in the nation. And I think that if we are going to go in that direction, the city needs to create a police commission, but a commission that really merits and selects individuals who have a background with regard to their ability to set a definitive agenda and accountability. My experience with the commissions and the people that many of you have selected for many of the commissions, it seems to me that in addition to their professional experience, are individuals who are on the agreeableness scale very high. And I think that's part of the problem. We found that problem with regard to the, as an example, the traffic and transportation, transportation and parking commission, where basically the staff can tell them, we're not going to have any meetings, and you have over 50% of the meetings canceled at the direction of staff, and where there actually no performance measures. If we're going to go in that direction, where you're actually going to have a powerless and insignificant commission, then absolutely don't go in that direction. Just simply have the police department be accountable to you and report to you on a periodic basis. But if it is to have a serious and significant and responsible police commission, then by all means, my suggestion is that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Al Hoffman, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good morning, Mayor Grayman, councilmembers, staff, and public. Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. First of all, I must say that the police are fantastic personnel that we have in this city and every city that protect us. They're asked to make decisions on the fly that they have to react to immediately. Sometimes they make a wrong one, but it's unusual. It usually takes an advisory committee and all kinds of management and everything, weeks, months, to find out they made the right or wrong decision. They have to make it on the fly. And I don't think they get enough credit for the position they're in. They're putting their lives on the line every day. I believe we currently have a process to deal with it. As I understand, there is a public advisory board made up of 25 different associations and whatnot. I read that in the paper. And apparently, they only meet once a quarter, and they haven't been open to the public. I think that forum is all we need, and this budget problems we're having now, we certainly don't need another commission or another advisory board to take up more time and more things that are going on. I believe the process we have now, if there is a problem that is brought forward, the city manager, the police chief, if there's a personnel problem, it goes to the civil service commission for getting resolved if that person needs to be reprimanded or even removed from his position. So I believe the process that we have now is sufficient. I believe it needs to maybe be more open to the public at times, but I don't see a need to create another commission. If we really had a police commission, the members of that commission would have to be vetted, to the point I'd say they'd have to go through a thorough FBI background check. Because if you're going to make, if you're going to start ruling on an officer's or the chief's actions, you have to have very, very qualified people on that commission doing that job. Because if you don't, it can be a finger-pointing situation and somebody could get hurt in their position by not having the right qualified people making the decision on them. But I think the process we have now works. I think it's, it's been, obviously, there's some issues that came up. I believe they will work those issues and make it work to the best interest of the city of Glendale. And we do have a fantastic police department, there's no doubt about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Nancy Kent, followed by Kevin J. Berry.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. The police have an extremely challenging job, and they're often dealing with people at their worst, and they deal with what the rest of us do not want to deal with ourselves. My personal experiences with Glendale police have always been completely positive. That being said though, I think it would be good for Glendale to have a group or a commission or an advisory board or whatever you want to call it, but a group of volunteers appointed by the city council who have our police department as their focus and who meet at least once a month, and they would bring concerns either to the city council or to the police chief. A few years ago, I had a concern about Glendale police that I did not think rose to the level of bringing up at a city council meeting. And I called the police department to find out the date of the next meeting of the existing advisory group and found out that their meetings are not open to the public, although the person I was speaking to said that he thought he could arrange for me to attend a meeting. I would suggest to consider creating this group but have it sunset in two years. So the city council would evaluate just before the two years was up, what this group is accomplishing, is it beneficial, and should it be extended or made permanent, or should it just be allowed to sunset because it's not worth the staff time to have this group of, call it commissioner, advisory board, or whatever. Thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Kevin J. Berry, followed by Ricardo A. Pimentel Jr.
Hey, good morning, councilmen and everything. I came here today because I want the council to have courage.
Can you please state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Kevin J. Berry, and I want the council to have courage because we do have a great police force here. But with any great organization, there's got to be oversight. And in my personal experience, I don't know if any of you have been pulled from your car and handcuffed and just let go and said you were stopped because you made too many right turns or, you know, other, like infractions and you're just pulled over. I think it needs to be looked at. It needs to have someone outside the department to look at it. And I know the mayor said, you know, he's not leaning toward a police commission, but in my mind, why wouldn't you? Why wouldn't you have independent oversight of the police? Because like with any organization, what you inspect, they're going to respect. Our police force is fantastic. I'm a 20-year Glendale resident, but there have been certain times where I've had encounters with the police where I've done nothing wrong, and I know other citizens have had those same encounters. And, you know, we got to have oversight so those things don't happen. There's innocent people who are being pulled from their cars to get warrantless searches, you know, so they can find, you know, try to find contraband. It's against our constitution and it's against what Glendale, I think, stands for. I remember when I first was going to come here 20 years ago, they told me, don't move to Glendale because you'll have problems with the police. I don't find problems with the police on every occasion. Our police force is fantastic. I've managed stores here, but on certain occasions, they do overstep the bounds, and that's where we need a police commission to take care of that. And when you guys have these council meetings at 10:30 in the morning, I don't know if you can have them at another time, but I mean, this is just anecdotal evidence, but let me tell you, there are a lot more people who've had unpleasant encounters with the Glendale police force who would come and share their stories with you. So that's why I'm asking today for you guys to have the courage to, you know, make our police force the best it can be by having a police commission, by involving citizens. When there is a complaint, I had a complaint recently, I went to a Glendale police force right there at the police department, and you know what I was told? I was told if I were to file the complaint, then they would recommend that the officers sue me. So I mean, these kind of things, I think people are dissuaded from going to the police to file complaints because they're worried. They're worried that they're going to be intimidated. And I mean, I can understand, you know, you can have many encounters with the police where it's good, but the few encounters you have when it's poor, those, that sets the tone for our youth and the people in our community. Again, I don't want, I don't have an axe to grind against the police department. I think we live in a fantastic city, but I think the council needs to have that courage to say, hey, we do need a police commission because they will inspect what you respect. And if each one of you can look me in the eye and tell me you haven't heard of any incidents in Glendale where minority or ethnic groups have been pulled over for warrantless searches, then, I mean, look me in the eye and tell me you've never heard that. Because I think that's why we need a commission. We need someone to come forward and to say, hey, this is not right. Because you know what? Our police force will do what we want them to do if they know they're being inspected. They're a great police force. I can't say, you know, they don't respond to calls or anything. I mean, we're not like L.A., but I can say there have been times where we have rogue elements within the police force who are violating people's constitutional rights, who are pulling people out of their cars, handcuffing them, and then asking, hey, can we search your car? I mean, come on, we know this, and you guys have heard, I know you guys have heard this from citizens of Glendale. And I mean, I don't want this to be like a dog and pony show where we just have this and then they say, we don't need a commission. We do need it, and I need, I think you guys need to have that courage to say, yes, we need it, and not to say, oh, well, they'll just police themselves. No one polices themselves. Everyone has to have oversight because that way we can tell whether our police force is good, we can take care of those problems when we do have those unfortunate, excuse me, those unfortunate stops when people are harassed. You don't want that to happen in your city. You don't want people to not be able to walk around in fear of the police. You want them to be able to go to the police at any time. You don't want our youth being, you know, stopped, where are you going? You know, what kind of car are you driving? How'd you get this car? Those are the kind of questions you don't want to be stopped on your daily, you know, when you're going to work or you're going out. You don't want to be stopped like that. And I think if this council has the courage to make that oversight, I'll tell you what will happen. We will have the best police force, but we will not if you guys shy away from it and say, we don't need it because, you know, it'll cost too much or we have to vet people. That's not what it's all about. What it's about is making sure that our police force is the best police force and that they cater to every citizen, and they do it by the law. They have a tough job. I'm not denying that they have a tough job, but you know what? They have to play by the rules. It isn't, it's tough. It's tough. It isn't, it's tough. It's tough having to play by the rules. Criminals don't play by the rules. But you know what? That's why we have the Constitution, and that's why we need to have a police commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Ricardo A. Pimentel Jr., followed by Richard Aspirito.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members, and people of the City of Glendale. My name is Ricardo Antonio Pimentel Jr., and I am one of the people that have been, I believe, you know, harassed, and I luckily have been able to get it on audio and video and post it up on the internet. Now, what I'm here to speak about today is that if officers are not held accountable for their actions, then basically, they can do whatever they want and say, "Well, I am policing myself." And I believe that if you're gonna have any kind of oversight, it should be independent, because if it's not open to the public, then, you know, they can say whatever they want. It may not even be held, and they can say it was held. So I'm also here because I wanted to speak about certain officers that have done certain things to me, and I was not able to speak and say their names for the simple fact that it was an ongoing case. However, I just finished from coming from court yesterday. It was dismissed, in the interest of justice, of course, since I was arrested just for merely sitting in my car. Well, I, it led me to wonder, and why was it that officers can arrest you just because you have a blanket, or a shirt, or, you know, socks? That means that people here can go and do laundry, because if they park for half an hour somewhere to talk with somebody, guess what? You've committed a misdemeanor. And that is a city ordinance, for now, I've been told. Okay? Now, well, so, thanks to, I believe his name is Officer Sergeant Breckenridge, Officer Aguión, and other officers that right now I don't recollect, but those are the main ones, I have done my own investigation. I've been doing a lot of investigating, and I've, and I've come to a conclusion as to why it is that they can do, you know, maybe not what they want, but they can police themselves without having to be held accountable. At least, that's what they think, for now. Well, the reason they think that, I believe, is because I have here a document, I've been doing some investigating, and it shows to what I have, I believe, here, that the Chief of Police, Randy G. Adams, does not, by definition, have a valid oath of office. And it's certified to show that, where it came from. So I don't know if you were talking about how, you know, we have to have trust in officers, and I'm not saying that all of them are bad, because like they said, a lot of people, a lot of officers do do things at the last minute, at the split second, and they have to put themselves on the line. And in a lot of my videos, I tell them, "Hey, it's not your fault. I don't blame you. It's the training that you've got." See, you have to understand, if you, as a public official, do not know the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of the State of California, then you really don't know when you are violating somebody's rights. So you really don't know what it is that's going on. And I told them that they are opening themselves to a lot of things that they are not aware of. So if I could leave this here with you, this document, I would appreciate that everybody could see that document, and that is all I have to say. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Take a question out of the speaker. Generally, do that at the end, but if it's something that is immediate in nature. We only have two more speakers. Mr. Pimentel, there may be a question for you, so if you are able to remain for a few moments. Richard Aspirito, followed by Gary Cornell.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I'm Dr. Richard Aspirito. I want to clarify something. I did not propose a police commission for a bunch of reasons. One, Chief Randy Adams has put together what I believe to be an outstanding advisory committee. The only problem with that, it meets quarterly and doesn't have any teeth. When I appeared in front of the Civil Service Commission, they were going to discuss the possibility of putting some teeth into the Civil Service Commission to look at the possibility of them, the Civil Service Commission, being able to reprimand police officers for something other than police office misconduct or police office misconduct. I was interested in seeing what they could do if a police officer had misconduct toward a civilian. Assistant Chief DePampa, Tom Lorenz, and Chief Adams. I've had many conversations with these gentlemen, and I've also shared coffee with them. I do not believe that every police officer in the City of Glendale is a bad guy. I think there are police officers in the City of Glendale who misuse their authority and do things, and several weeks ago, there was a gentleman who came up and said somebody was a born bigot. Bigotry is something that is learned, and bigotry has existed in this town for a long time. It was addressed against the blacks, it was addressed against the Hispanics. There was a time here in Glendale that Hispanics could not live north of Colorado Boulevard. If Mr. Berry was here a number of years ago and had a white wife like I had, you would have gotten harassed, because I did get harassed by the Glendale Police Department. If you think of putting a commission together based on the Dixiecrat method of politics back in the forties, I suggest you don't put together another commission. What I would also like to do is, I'd like to give the city council copies of a story by Mr. Lowell Stewart. This was a gentleman who was with the Three Thirty Second Fighter Squadron, and I would love Chief Randy Adams and Chief DePampa and Tom Lorenz to put their heads together and come up with a memorandum, very similar to the United States Army, memorandum four-fifty dash fifty, which talks about integration and segregation and bigotry in the Army. This was done in nineteen forty-three. I wish the chief would put something together like that. When I talked to Assistant Chief DePampa on several occasions regarding language English proficiency, he and I came to an understanding. We were talking about it, we had a number of meetings, gave him documents, and they're still in the process of trying to figure out how to comply with that. What I would like you to do is, I would very like, strongly recommend that you look at enhancing the power of the existing advisory commission that the police department already has, and putting some teeth into the Civil Service Commission, and not wasting your time and money to create another commission that will be based on the Dixiecrat method of politics. Mr. Kosaki, could you hand this to the members of the city council?
Thank you, Mr. Aspirito. Gary Cornell, followed by Lenore Solis.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Howard, and Mr. Starburg. Mr. Mayor, this is very good, that we can have an open discussion like this, and perhaps maybe look at the existing advisory board, CPAC, that we now have, and that has been advising the chief since two thousand and four. And hopefully, out of these discussions, if we can get some constructive feedback about perhaps how we can maybe improve CPAC, maybe update it, maybe along some of the recommendations from what you're hearing from the public. Now, when we hear these comments, Mr. Mayor, I think we should differentiate some of these comments from the individuals when they come up here, and see if they're sincere and genuine. You know, if a citizen just got a citation yesterday, or maybe a day before, from the police department, they're not gonna come up and hug and love the police department too much. Maybe perhaps they're gonna sock it to it. But this is good, that we have this open discussion. The CPAC, since I've been a member of it, has been open and transparent. We have twenty-five members that are from all political spectrums, all the way from the left to the right. A lot in between. Everything, there is nothing that's taboo at the committee meetings. If you have something on the agenda, it can be put on the agenda with advance notice. We handle such topics as racial profile, complaints when they come in, other aspects There's about, there's nothing left off of the topic, even items that are brought up by the police management that they need advice and consent on. And when you have all political spectrums from twenty-five members that are adverse activists in the community, you've got a pretty good spectrum of the community and the information and facts and concerns that are right before the CPAC. Now, CPAC is generally four items of goals that we like to look forward to and establish. And that is, the first one is establish a conduit and maintain a mechanism for timely identification of problems and our issues within the community. And we have that with twenty-five members, all the way from GLA to the chamber, even the homeowners association. Number two, act as an advisory group to the Chief of Police and Police Management. Act as a conduit for accurate information between the community and the police department, which is the main purpose of the advisory group. And to promote community awareness, understanding, involvement in police programs and services. That we do. As I mentioned, when you take a look at some of the accomplishments that the commission or advisory group has done since its formation in two thousand and four, it stands for a lot. There's a lot of accomplishment there. Number one, we added forty, forty police officers. And number two, we're open and transparent. If a citizen wants to bring a complaint to the police department, there's mechanism for that. If they feel intimidated by not going to the police department because it is a police department problem, then they can come to you, gentlemen, or this Mr. Starburg, even Mr. Howard's office. I feel at this time, for your discussions, Mr. Mayor, and how this goes, and perhaps recommendations, but at this time, I feel additional layer bureaucracy on this issue is not needed. It just adds to the conversation of being able to be able to serve better the citizens of this beautiful city. And for right now, until you complete your session, and the participants that are gonna speak before you, I would say, leave as is and approve what we have. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Lenore Solis.
Lenore Solis, citizen of Glendale. I don't even know where to start. Well, first, I think maybe I'll give you a little bit of history about myself. I have a commendation from the City of L.A. Police Department. I've worked with the police department in L.A. since the mid-nineties. I've served on the chief's advisory committees, two of them, since the mid-nineties. I've sat on the interview panel, when they had an interview panel, for LAPD and also for FIRE. And I'm a chaplain at the local jail, so I have a little bit of knowledge and a different perspective. And I can see how accountability, openness, transparency are so important. And I'm a bit surprised that Mr. Cornell, whom I've known and respect, come up here and talk about how open and transparent the police advisory committee is, when I was advised that, "No, you can't come, because it isn't open and transparent. It's only open to the people who are members of that committee." So I, I go to a lot of meetings in this city, and I've never heard anybody stand up and give me a report on what's gone on at one of those meetings. You know, LAPD has an inspector general, so if you feel like you cannot get your recourse through the, through the police department process, then you can always write a letter to the inspector general, and he, who doesn't, who, you know, works through the commission, can investigate whatever it is that you have a problem with. Now, have I ever personally had an issue with the police department in Glendale? Absolutely. I didn't like the way they would treat my son. My son would walk home from school, and several times, he got stopped and frisked. For what reason? I don't think my son looks like he's a gangbanger. I've never allowed my son to dress in a manner that would be conducive to that lifestyle. And, I mean, I complained. I wrote a letter. I came down. I spoke to a sergeant who explained to me how I had no recourse. I let it go. I could have pushed it, but I didn't. I've had problems with, with a patrol officer. I called a sergeant. They took care of it. I was satisfied with that. And I think it's very important to understand that when you are from the, on the outside looking in at what police officers are doing, it's very difficult if you're a civilian and you have not walked in their shoes. You know, I'm a graduate of the LAPD Civilian Academy, and I remember doing the firearms training monitor, and it was so interesting, because you go through all this training that teaches you when you can fire, what's, what's within department policy, and then when you're in front of that monitor, and you start shooting away, and you realize that, man, you're, you were totally outside of department policy, or you killed a bystander, or you, you're dead. I mean, it is a tough, tough job. I mean, and let me tell you, I suggested they have the reporters, especially from the L.A. Times, come and do that, because it is a tough, tough job. And we all know that there are far more good people in the police department than bad. So let's not ever judge our police department by the handful of people who are immature or who have chosen to disregard the policies of our department. So I don't think the issues are policies. I think the issue is absolutely oversight. And I know, as, you know, we had a lot of riots in, in the jails, and they brought in a bunch of chaplains to go talk to the inmates, to find out, "Hey, what's going on, guys?" And I was amazed at the chaplains who were not jail chaplains, but who were hospital chaplains, different types of chaplains. Their perspective coming into the jail versus my perspective from working in a jail was so completely different, because they didn't get it. They didn't understand that there's no maid service there. If it's dirty, it's because the inmates haven't cleaned up. It has nothing to do with because you're black or you're, or you're brown. It has to do with you're clean or you're not. So I think it's very important that, yes, an evaluation take place, and I do not think there is sufficient accountability and transparency, and I think that that police advisory committee is an example of that. I was advised that, "No, it's not open to the public." And if you're gonna have a committee like that, why wouldn't it be? I mean, what could transpire there that wouldn't be open to the public? Why is there never a report made? Why do we never see an agenda of what is covered? I mean, how transparent is that? What is the purpose of that? So I think we really need to evaluate, because let's face it, the police department is a paramilitary organization. It's led by the top down. And if the people on the bottom are costing us money because of lawsuits, then maybe we need to look at the people on the top who have not been sufficiently accountable. Because remember, paramilitary organizations move from the top down. So you need to make sure that the people on the top are doing what the people, are telling the people on the bottom what needs to be done and what is expected of them. And let's not forget, we're still waiting for our diversity officer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Solis. That is our last speaker card. Let me go to my colleagues, Councilmember Najarian, you had asked.
I have some questions for Mr. Pimentel. And I know you came to council last week.
Yes.
I had an emergency phone call. I had to step out, so I didn't, I was unable to hear everything you said. You're referring to some videos, and are you Tactical Guy One?
That is the name on the internet that I, yes, I chose. That is not, I mean, posted videos.
So when you go to YouTube and you look Um, so when you go to YouTube and you look up the videos posted by Tactical Guy One, are those your videos?
Yes.
And you, you took all of them?
Uh, yes, I did.
Are those, would you say those are, for the most part, unedited videos that were?
They are all unedited.
And, uh, you're a law student?
Uh, no, not yet.
You intend to be a law student?
Uh, I intend to, yes.
Intend to be a lawyer at some point?
Some point, maybe.
Um, and I looked at some of the videos, because it was raised earlier by Mr. Espirito as to some of the, and not so much the video itself, but some of the commentary that, that came afterwards. And, uh, I have to be honest with you, and a lot of those, most of those videos, um, and you're, you're using, you're, I guess, referencing them as evidence of being harassed. Uh, in all the videos that I saw, I saw the police officers acting with a lot of restraint in asking you, I think the main stumbling block was identification. Uh, they asked you for identification, a driver's license, uh, and you would not give them citing that California law does not require you to, to give a ID. And some of those videos went on for quite some time, uh, ten, twenty minutes, maybe more. And I know on some of them, there were more than one unit that arrived. Um, and you weren't, uh, I didn't see how they ended. Were you ever handcuffed in any of those?
Uh, the one where it's posted as retaliation, part one and two, they actually left me alone, and I even shook the officer's hand because I said, look, uh, number one, I'm not committing a crime. I'm merely sitting in my car. Uh, last time I checked, that's not a crime. But when he said, well, because my back window was broken, I explained to him that, uh, the first time I ever got, uh, I believe harassed, uh, there is on my audio recording on my YouTube. The officers actually, uh, the way my car is, they ripped the plastic that was stuck to the window, so it was basically hanging from the top. Around two or three weeks later, I forgot that it was even ripped, you know, because I always put my top down, and I happened to put it down, but it broke because of the angle it was at. And, uh, so that's, that's what's happened there. So, uh, as far as that, I explained to him, this is why I have a blanket there, so I can put it, because obviously you don't want people just going in your vehicle from the back, because I've already had my, you know, radio stolen, so. And he still stated, well, let me see your identification. And I explained to him that this is not Nazi Germany, where you wanna see my papers, and if I don't, then I'm a criminal. I thought I was innocent until proven guilty, but it seems that we have different opinions, and this is why I'm glad I'm in, you know, America.
Is asking for identification your analogy to living in a Nazi Germany environment?
Well, what happens is that if, uh, you don't show your identification...
Which you didn't.
Which I didn't.
Beaten?
No, no, actually, I was not beaten.
And so I'm not sure what the, what the issue is. I mean, I saw them many times ask you for the ID. I didn't see any, I didn't see, I mean, this isn't a Rodney King type of situation where you were pounded over the head. And the Rodney King incident did lead, lead to some reforms and some additional safeguards for the, uh, for the LAPD. Uh, I mean, as I understand it, you're in a car, there's no back window, you're just parked. I have to be honest with you, if you were in front of my house, I would want the police department to get there and find out who you were and what you were doing there. And if that's police harassment, folks, then that's what I'm willing to live with. Uh, I do not condone any beating, any, uh, racial slurs, uh, anything else of that nature. But at the very least, uh, I want my police to find out who's sitting in front of my house in a car that with, has a, has no rear window, and someone who's very evasive in terms of offering the very basic explanation as to who they are and why they're there.
And, uh, so you know, um, I believe in that also, if somebody does call. However, nobody has ever called, not once, uh, to report that I was there. And I was told that somebody did. And when I merely mentioned it to Sergeant Breckenridge that I was gonna be filing up a records request to verify if somebody did call, he changed his answer very quickly. So this is to, what I'm trying to get at, is that if somebody calls because I'm sitting there and it bothers them, then by all means, you know, that's great, you know, I understand, because maybe that might happen to me also. But, uh, I, I thought that we all had a, a right to just rest in our vehicle, whether it's about an hour or two, or whatever you'd like, as long as you are not being a nuisance and just in the way and taking up parking space.
I kinda see it as a two-way street where, and I'll be, I'll conclude, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, I'll go one step further. I want the police to seek out and identify folks. I don't want them to have to wait for a phone call. And let me tell you that I'm a, I'm a defense lawyer. Uh, I am a criminal defense lawyer, and I handle these type of cases. And so if there's any sort of, uh, background and bias, I'm certainly, uh, on the side of the defendant, uh, clearly innocent until proven guilty. But as a city councilman, as a father, as a one who is trying to keep us a safe city, I don't see anything that you had in your videos as any proof of any harassment, and in itself would call for the creation of a police commission. Thank you, Mr. Pramantel, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. You left out that you're also a husband.
I'm a husband too.
I don't want, I don't want Mrs. Najarian to be, uh, like she was left out, so. Um, all right, let me go to Councilmember Quintera.
I have a question for the chief. A couple of them, actually. Chief, how many sworn officers does the Glendale PD have, more or less?
We have, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty-four.
Two-sixty-four. And then, and civilian personnel?
Uh, with our total sworn, uh, our total civilian personnel and part-time, hourly and so forth, our total number is just under five-hundred now.
So two-hundred-and-sixty-four sworn officers. Do you have any idea, just when you think about it, and if you don't, maybe, uh, some of the captains could give us an idea, how many contacts do you think that, uh, police officers have with the public in any given year? Meaning detectives, uh, the patrol officers, just overall? You have any idea how many contacts?
Thousands.
Tens of thousands, I would suppose.
We have numerous contacts on a regular basis. All of our recorded contacts are actually on our website, uh, on a monthly basis. You can actually see a recap of calls for service type contacts and so forth. But if you're counting detectives and...
Well, just, well, let's start with the call for services. About how many do you think that might be?
Uh, we probably have over sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand a year? Sixty thousand a year in documented contacts, calls for services, et cetera?
Right.
And that doesn't include, uh, the detectives and other personnel doing different things, investigations?
That, that only includes first-line law enforcement, because we have, all of our detectives are secondary investigators, and they have contacts. That doesn't include also all of our parking enforcement staff. And, uh, so there's lots of contacts that would exceed that number.
And certainly the detectives, I'm sure, are in the thousands, and they're going to people's homes, knocking on doors, uh, phone calls, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. All right, that was it. I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Let me go to Mr. Weaver.
This is a question.
It's for the chief.
Yeah. Uh, Chief Adams, how many years you've been here now?
Five and a half, Councilman Weaver.
It's been that long already?
Yes. Six years in January.
In that time, as we hear these people getting up all these lawsuits and everything, being filed against the city, whatever, do you have any idea many lawsuits or anything, or attempts to file during that period that you've been here?
Uh, yes, Councilman Weaver, actually, because of a statement that was made during oral communications about the city paying out billions of dollars in lawsuits and so forth, uh, I actually went back, because I was curious myself, to get an actual number and asked our, uh, legal advisor to run, uh, a report on exactly how much litigation had been filed against our department since I've been the chief, which would start in January of two thousand and three. Um, during that period of time, uh, there had been forty-eight outside cases filed against the department by individuals. And, uh, out of those forty-eight cases, twenty-eight of those cases have been dismissed and/or there has been a total defense verdict, um, on behalf of, of the city, meaning that there was no fault found, uh, by the city in anything that had occurred. Eight of those cases are still pending and haven't been adjudicated yet. Uh, so that remains, or leaves twelve cases. Those twelve cases, over nearly a six-year period of time, have resulted in a total payout from the city of one-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Seven of those twelve cases are for traffic accidents with a total payout of fifty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which leaves five cases that are other than traffic-related in a six-year, nearly six-year period of time, with a payout of only fifty-one-thousand-fifteen dollars. Uh, there's also been ten cases involving the police facility. All of those were settled when the police facility was, was settled, all the issues surrounding that. And, uh, in defense of the captain in charge of that project, I would like to state, in my thirty-six years of experience in this business, to have a police facility that's as wonderful as our police facility is, that was taken back from the general contractor in order to finish that facility, and to deliver that facility at only three percent over the original budget is amazing. And, uh, and that includes all litigation, everything, is absolutely amazing. And I defy anyone, public or otherwise, to show me an example where that type of record can be beaten. Uh, we've also had eleven cases involving police employee issues. Four of those are pending. Uh, four cases have been settled with defense verdicts with no payment. And, uh, three cases have been settled with payments to employees, constituent workers, compensation payments, salary and disability payments. So other than that, that is the entire litigation that has occurred during the period of time that, uh, that I've been here as your chief. And I want you to know that I stand here as the chief, uh, wanting the department to be extremely open and transparent. And that's why we've also instituted at the department, uh, recording of all enforcement contacts, be they traffic or otherwise, by the officers of the department, so that we can have some best evidence when and if there is a complaint about inappropriate conduct by officers on the department. Uh, in addition to that, we are, um, implementing at this time, uh, video recording, so that we'll have, uh, uh, video pictures of any type of enforcement contact taken by our patrol units, uh, out on the street, and that should be fully implemented by the, uh, by the end of the year. So, uh, that's ongoing. We also have available on the website, uh, citizens' complaint form. If you wanna go on and file a complaint against the department, you can go on our website, download a form, fill it out, and send it into the department. Uh, every single complaint that we receive is thoroughly investigated, and appropriate action is taken. And, uh, we, uh, probably generate more, uh, complaints and issues and so forth internally than we even do externally, because the men and women of the department are very committed to continuing to raise that professional bar. So we're trying to do everything we can to be open and transparent. And hopefully that answers your question.
Well, more, more than I expected.
Um, before you go, Chief, because I have something I wanna ask you, but I don't got a turn, if, uh, I'm gonna see if Councilmember Yusefian has anything for you.
Was that two thousand and three or two thousand and two that you became the chief?
January of two thousand and three.
Sure about that?
Yes. Absolutely positive. I was sworn in, oh, by the way, I haven't seen this document that was presented up here, but, uh, I do have a video recording of the council meeting where I took my oath of office. That was actually February fourth of two thousand and three.
Actually, Chief, the mayor currently has that document right in front of him, and I was going to talk about that in a minute, so.
Oh, okay. So I thought you were here longer, but that's, time flies. I don't know.
My first date on the job was actually, uh, January thirty-first of two thousand and three.
Okay. Um, do you remember the conversation we had when you were just about to be appointed at the close session? When you came in to talk to the council? And do you remember some of us, different makeup in here, uh, told you some of the challenges that is facing you? And do you remember telling us that you're going to put together a chief's advisory committee, and you have done this in the past in other position you had, and you know how to deal with this, and so on and so forth?
Well, I do recall seeing that, uh, a chief's advisory board would be something that certainly we could put together with representatives from the community.
Right. And that's part of, part of what you promised me and the rest of us. So, Mayor, I'd like to finish.
I'm getting a, a question from, a legal question as to whether or not we can even pursue something that was in close session.
It was too late. He already said what he said.
All right.
It's, I mean, it's not a big deal. It's, it's public records, anyway. So my question to you is, when did we put that committee together?
Two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four. Okay. And, uh, I understood it took a long time to go through the background check. What I'm trying to understand is, what is it that you share in those meetings with that committee that requires, number one, a background check? I understand you wanna make sure they're not criminals, that's one thing. But it took a long time to get the background checked on, uh, which I didn't say much because I figured I'd give you the latitude to do what you need to do to get this going. What I wanna know is, what type of information do you share with those individuals that you cannot do this when there is an open session?
Well, Councilman Yusefian, I've actually heard the feedback here today about that particular, uh, request or thought, and I have really no problem in opening those meetings to the public. Um, the reason that, uh, it was thought to be unnecessary to have those meetings open to the public is the public is represented by twenty-five representatives. Right now, it's, we have about four vacancies. We have twenty-one that are actually on the, uh, the CPAC advisory board. Those representatives aren't selected by me. They're selected by the community of all the different organizations that are represented. And so the, the theory behind CPAC is that those representatives will represent to their constituencies what's discussed at those meetings and so forth. If that's not occurring, then maybe we do need to open the meetings, or at least have a public forum and opportunity to hear from the public if they'd like to attend those meetings. And I actually have no objection to seeing that happen.
Okay. So it's, it's, so it's not sensitive information that you're sharing with them? Like, you're not telling them, oh, tomorrow, we're gonna go kick down this door and walk in, and, and, and you're not telling them that that type of a sensitive information is basically just what is it we've done? Have you heard anything? Let us know, correct?
Well, Councilman Yusefian, I, I wouldn't always characterize it as never sensitive information. Sometimes if they have an issue or a concern, uh, we've had a number of discussions about recruitment, uh, we've had a number of discussions about racial profiling, we've had a number of discussions about particular issues that are, that might be sensitive issues to, uh, the individual members of the group. Uh, and I guess one of the things that's a benefit to that particular group is a lot of times, it's meetings that occur other than the quarterly meetings that help resolve a variety of issues. Because there are representatives that have, uh, immediate access and contact to us, and if they, uh, are feeling the pulse of the community and see some issue that needs to be dealt with and nipped in the bud, that's what it's there for. And we've had numerous meetings and opportunities to do that.
When I meant sensitive, I meant sensitive issues that will jeopardize your operation. That's what I was talking about. Not that they are sensitive. I understand that.
We would try to keep those issues confidential until such time as they wouldn't jeopardize anything.
Okay. So they are not told. Right. Thank you. Uh, these are, I mean, we were giving this, and I understand this is something that is from you, Randy Adams, it says, uh, with the police thing in here. Uh, and, and my question is, uh, there are four items in here. Establish conduct and maintain a mechanism for the timely identification of the problem and issues within the community. How do you do that? And, uh, to act as a conduit and accurate information between the community and the police department. How do you know they are doing this? Do you check and verify? What is it that they do? Promote community awareness, understanding, and involvement in the police program and services. What do you consider that to be, uh, to do, to accomplish this goal? And so what I'm trying to understand, these sound good on a piece of paper, but how, because they are advisory to you, not the police department. they are advisory to you, not the police department. They're advisory to you and only to you. And my question is, how do you verify that this twenty-five individuals or twenty individuals are actually doing that? Actually telling you some of the issues in the community, actually going out there and letting the community know about all the different programs that you have or some of the issues, and you want feedback? How do you know they're doing that? Is there a way you weigh this stuff? Or how do you, I mean, it's just you and twenty people. I mean, you've got to manage all these people. How do you know they're doing their job?
Okay. Councilman Yusefian, just to correct the record a little bit, it's not just me and twenty-five people. At those particular meetings, I bring the entire command staff of the department.
Okay.
We interact with that group. We report on a variety of issues that have occurred at the department. We go over everything from using members of that group to sit on oral boards for selections of officers and people on the department. We've had them be actively involved in the formation of our strategic plan, which is in its final stages of preparation. We've involved them in a lot of different activities. It's a two-way street. We give them minutes of the meetings. We regularly keep them moved on what's going on, so there's a frequent exchange of information. Now, what we don't know is how many people they talk to from their constituency in the group that they represent. And as I've said, I've heard today that from some, there'd be a desire to come speak to that group. And I think that, you know, we can potentially arrange that if that is the direction. I mean, we're certainly trying in every way with this department to be open and transparent. You know, again, during my career, I've been with a lot of different organizations. I've got to tell you, I haven't seen a finer one. I'm extremely proud to be the chief of police of this department and very proud of the men and women of this department. And I've got to tell you, you have a culture here of people that really are very sensitive to the community they serve.
You said there were eleven police officers to police officer lawsuits. What was the cost of that? You did not give us the total cost of that.
You're talking about the internal, you know, police employee suits? That was six hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. And that included workers' compensation payments, salary and disability payments.
What happened with the Frieder's case?
Frieder's case was before my time, and that, my understanding on that is it wasn't a seven-point-one million dollar settlement.
No, it was a three-point-two million.
It was a three-
Three-point-two. Three-point-two million. I don't make mistakes on the numbers. I remember them. So, it's a three-point-two. I don't know who came up with all those billions of dollars. It's never billions. You've been in the paper, you know, in the last couple of days, and the question is, and I'll ask you point-blank, are you leaving the city? Are you looking for a job in Ventura?
Number one.
The reason I'm asking, because the rumors are out there. You're here. This is your chance to kill it right now.
I have not applied for any jobs in the city of Ventura.
Okay.
I have not announced any plans to retire.
Okay.
And when I, when and if I, and I won't be here forever, obviously.
Nobody is.
All of you won't be here forever. When and if I get to a point where I feel that it's time to retire, I will certainly make that announcement, and I will give the city plenty of notice, like months of notice.
I just want to know, you're going to be on my Christmas list, then?
Yes.
Thank you. So, he's still here till December. He's always on the list. Thank you, Chief.
Maybe the better question is, will you be on his Christmas list? But, in any case, let me, Mr. Howard.
Just a quick point to make sure the record is clear. The CPAC committee, or, I don't know, that's what it is called, I guess, CPAC Advisory Committee, was a chief-created committee. It was not created by the city council.
Right.
And I wanted to make that clear. There was some reference to "we" created it, and I just wanted to make it clear that it was created solely by the chief.
Actually, Mr. Howard, that and the words that Mr. Yusefian just uttered are actually part of what I want to get to in a moment. But before we get to that, I want to just clarify, and this is, you know, part of the kind of thing that I think at least some of my colleagues and I are struggling with. Chief, and I know you can appreciate this, we sit up here and we hear input from the public in this format, not necessarily a study session, but every Tuesday. We also get input from every citizen you can imagine who stops us, calls us, writes to us, emails us, et cetera, with all, any number of comments, compliments, complaints, et cetera. This is an example of what I wanted to get at, and I want to take the opportunity while you're here. This was presented this morning by a speaker. It's a blank form that you, the chief, administer to officers who are to be sworn in. This is not your, and it's blank because it's a form. And the implication was that this was your swearing-in document, your document that you have never fulfilled when you were sworn in, implying that, Chief, the chief himself is never a sworn officer. Just, you know, now that I think we're all a little more sensitized and looking very carefully, this actually is yours where you were sworn in. And instead of saying, as this one does, "I," with a blank to fill in the form, this is "I, Randy G. Adams." And it's a different form altogether, anyway, for the chief than it is for, but this is an administrative form, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I just wanted to clarify that, that even this morning, as we're looking at this, we are hearing this kind of static that comes in, not with a question. I mean, I can understand somebody having that question, coming up here and saying, you know, here is this, what does this mean? Does this mean the chief wasn't sworn? Maybe even asking you or asking an administrator. But no, it's presented in this form here as though it's fact. And I think we're all getting a little weary of some of that, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I hadn't been sworn in, I would have been bringing that to somebody's attention. I could give it to you, though.
Okay. The other, just a couple of other things I want to get to, and it's not specifically questions that I have of you, Chief. I've said pretty much what I wanted to say about our conversations about this meeting and anticipation of this meeting. I just want to verify with you that's pretty much your characterization as I explained it to the public. I didn't get from you any sense that there was any hesitance or reservation at all about coming here to have this conversation or to have such a series or a group of study sessions. This is a process that we will walk through and see where my colleagues in the council, along with you and the public and city staff, want to go.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, we, again, I've said publicly, I will continue to say, the police department isn't threatened by the concept of a police commissioner advisory panel or board or whatever. My concern is as to whether it's really necessary or not, because at any time, I mean, we're not a huge city, and, you know, you can call, you're the elected representatives of the city. You can call me forward on any personnel or issue into a closed session. We certainly are open and transparent when we can to let those things be viewed by people that have a need to know and a right to know. We certainly have to protect the confidentiality of employees and that type of thing, but we try to be as open and transparent as we can. And one thing that I can assure you without hesitation is that inappropriate conduct on the police department is dealt with, and dealt with significantly.
Thank you. Let me just run a couple of things by you before you go, though, related to CPAC, which was mentioned here. And in a sense, maybe this is also a good thing because a little personal survey over the weekend was stopping about two hundred different people that I just ran into at various events, asking them, what is CPAC? And I got to tell you, none of them, they all flunked the task, Chief, so I hope they're not part of the twenty-one to twenty-five. It is not something, in my view, that is well-known out there because it is, it is an advisory group to the chief. It was created by the chief, and even though you don't appoint the members, the organizations in the city appoint amongst themselves someone to come and serve on this advisory board. It is not open to the public currently. And I think one of the reasons, of course, is not a, it doesn't fall under the purview of the Brown Act, which is what I think Councilmember Yusefian was mentioning and the city attorney was getting to. To me, that creates a problem. It was not created by this council, and it does not fall under the purview of the Brown Act, and therefore, issues about how that organization works and whether they're open to the public also is not the purview of this council. It is an advisory board to you. And I think we have to understand how the public can perceive that. You've heard some speakers here today, and I'm not talking about speakers who appear to have a long-running battle or history over, you know, whatever their issues are related to the police department, but just citizens who would like to see that a more open process. The reason I don't think I can support CPAC as just becoming the group that we may choose to go to without any modification, in other words, as one speaker said, Mr. Cornell, just leave as is, is because they're not open to the public. Remember that what we're talking about here is not just the big juicy gossipy stories that we've been hearing spilling out at council meetings in the past couple of weeks. It's also other stuff. I have an email that I'm not going to read, but just a couple of points in it. The person that was emailing me in this particular email saying, you know, I hope that the council will support some sort of advisory board, is talking about other things. Quality of life issues, vandalism, noise and intoxicated patrons near a business establishment near his home, where he contends that, you know, he's contacted the police and he's not getting a resolution. Now, this is not a, the intent of this writer was not to say, therefore, the police department is corrupt or the officers aren't doing their job, you know, officers globally. He's just a guy living in a neighborhood that's having a noise problem, therefore a quality of life problem in his neighborhood. We have a number of boards and commissions that operate in a particular way. I think that we want to be careful when we say just leave as is, that what we don't say is, let's take the Glendale Water and Power Commission. I'm going to say that because, that we just do away with the Glendale Water and Power Commission as a, as a structure and a format for the public to come in and, on a regular basis, at a regular time, to address a specific body during an oral comment period, which CPAC doesn't offer. Simply to do away with it because we say, well, Glenn Steiger, who is the department head, has some advisory committee that he set up that advised him. The two don't perform the same function. And it's not to knock CPAC. That's not the purpose here. But we're sort of also dancing around the issue, they can't get into some of the issues. And I think also Councilmember Yusefian was getting to that also. They can't get into some of the issues, the bigger issues that have been raised. You know, there are a whole variety of accusations, whether true or not, and those that are certain cases that we know about, they can't get in, the CPAC can't get into, you know, the discussion of those. Some of them have to do with issues that can't be raised, the public can't. And currently, they're not dealing with issues such as this email, just simple, you know, noise intoxication problems from patrons from a business that seems to be ongoing. So, I don't have a big problem with expanding CPAC into something else, but I think we do need, if we're going to continue with that and say that this is going to serve the purpose of an advisory group to you, they are to you, not to us as elected officials, it does need to be open to the public in some way. It does need to meet regularly. It, those, its very existence has to be public. The public has to understand they're there. They meet with this structure. There's a place we can go to ask questions, see how the process works, vet our notions. Same thing like Traffic and Parking Commission does. They could go to Jan O'Vigdaniel and say, you know, we think we need speed bumps. But instead, they can come to the TPC here, and they can ask for those things during an oral comment period. They can be told about the tools available to them in their neighborhoods to get speed bumps or humps, about speeding issues, about all sorts of issues related to traffic engineering and so on. I would see the, a police advisory commission or whatever we're calling it, to have those kinds of functions if we go, if we go that direction. Mr. Berry, I think it was, made a comment that he said the mayor has stated that I am not leaning towards a police commission. That's not what I said. I said, I don't know what I'm leaning toward yet. I haven't made up my mind. And that is the whole purpose of, I think, for all of us, we're trying to get-
You want him to stand there?
We're trying to get, we're trying to get information that will help us make a better Chief, I want to ask you, where are you on the subject of CPAC as it relates to some of the needs you've heard expressed here about wanting more, an open format for citizens to go to, have somebody hear their complaint or hear their input, not necessarily just a complaint? I have an idea. I think this would help my neighborhood, a place where they can go.
Mr. Mayor, I'm certainly open to trying to build in a public component into CPAC and perhaps pick up the amount of meetings that we have instead of quarterly. We could have a monthly or every other month, depending upon a need. We're certainly open to that. I do, you know, I would certainly want to talk to our legal advisors to make sure that any structural change we made to it was something that they would advise and that we were making sure that we were doing everything appropriate with that particular body or group. But I'm certainly open to that. I do want to make one other comment in response to some of your comments.
Please.
And that is that we regularly receive emails directly from the community, as I know all of you do. And many times, you forward emails that you receive, if they require police action, directly to us, and we directly act on those. I mean, on a regular basis, we're out doing directed patrols in certain areas, we're assigning quality of life projects, we're trying to address a variety of things in the community that are brought to us by community members. And I think that we have a pretty excellent track record of being responsive to the community and to all of you when those types of issues are brought forward. And we would continue to do that. We have people monitoring the email on a regular basis. I'll give out my email address again to anybody that has an issue or a concern. They can email the department directly, and we will look at that issue. We also monitor all of the oral communications from the city council meeting, and we initiate investigations sometimes just based upon a dissertation made by a member of the public complaining about something about the police department, and go out to try to gather all the facts to see what the totality is of the information that's being presented. We will continue to do that. I am committed, as your chief, as I know the men and women at the police department are, to being open and transparent. My entire command staff echoes that value. And we will do whatever we can to be as responsive and open and make this the very best department in the nation. I happen to think that it is, but if there's things that we can do to enhance it and improve it, we will do that. But I'm the first one to admit, the police department is not perfect. I'm not perfect. The men and women that work for me aren't perfect. We, from time to time, are going to make mistakes. And when we make mistakes, those mistakes need to be dealt with, and the appropriate discipline needs to be taken. But I think it's important that before somebody runs to judgment in a situation, there needs to be a complete and thorough investigation, and all of the facts need to be determined before there's that final action taken. And you can be assured that, as your chief, I make sure that that occurs in that specific process of the department.
Chief, let me just, let me just come back to the question again real quick, though. What is your take on whether or not CPAC would be benefited from a more open process where the public can actually know when they're meeting, where they're meeting, who the members are, and have an open forum for the public?
I would see, Mr. Mayor, I would see no problem in introducing that component to CPAC, as long as Mr. Howard didn't see any issue or concern with that.
And I'm not clear that, yet, I will turn to Mr. Howard in a minute, but I'm not clear that we can simply take CPAC and do that, because they were created differently than that kind of commission is created. So, I thank you, Chief, for being open, and I see that, and addressing the various questions, my own included. Mr. Quintero has his hand up.
I don't have a question, just some Randy to say some comment.
I think then we can, unless- I think then we can, unless Councilmember Najarian asks for the question.
No, I just want to know when we get to the...
I'll be chief, I want to know.
Oh, no, no questions.
Dave?
No questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I'll start my summation. I'm not interested in a police commission, period. I think that the police forces, the sworn officers specifically, are held accountable. I've been in this city since the 1970s, late 70s, and it's been my experience throughout the years that, in fact, the Civil Service Commission has dealt with misconduct by the police. When you look at different standards for different city departments, the police are held to the all-time highest standard. That's been my experience throughout the years, as I've watched the Civil Service Commission and various infractions that police officers have been accused of. I do think that we need to readjust the advisory committee. I'd like, and technically will do whatever we need to do to do that. I do like the open process. I think it should be open to the public. And in other words, the Brown Act is going to apply. If they need to get into closed sessions, that they would go into a closed session. But the whole idea of the public notice, meetings, monthly meetings or meetings every couple of months as necessary. As I look at the list of advisory board members and the organizations that they serve, I think it's absolutely a broad spectrum of a Glendale community. Another thing I would like to see would be the idea that a person, it is available on the Internet, but quite often people don't, and they'll know that or participate, you know, in Internet-type of activities. I would like to see a form developed. I would like to see a process developed. When someone complains and they go to the police station in person, that person is given a minimal form, et cetera, and that allegation of misconduct would be directed to a specific lieutenant, not a sergeant, a specific lieutenant, who would then report to a specific captain and on to the police chief. So there's no ambiguity in terms of, they told me at the front desk, X, Y, Z. Everybody at the front desk gets told A, B, C, and that's the process. And that complaint will fail or succeed on its merits, and there's a specific chain of command starting at the lieutenant level. And I think that will go a long way of this, in my opinion, a misconception that somehow people go to the front desk and they're told one thing and this and the other. That will end that once and for all. I think that's a process worth examining. And then, you know, I specifically asked that question. I mean, with 60,000 documented contacts and God knows how many other undocumented contacts there are, I mean, there are tens of thousands of contacts, whether they take place at 8:00 in the morning for a traffic citation or 2:00 at night when someone is pulled over. That's an awful lot of contacts, a lot of interaction, with, of course, a police officer not really knowing who it is that they're about to meet and greet, as they say. So all in all, I think the police department in the city of Glendale is doing a damn good job of policing the streets and just general demeanor. And then finally, let me say one more. I really get tired, you know, year after year, when they talk about Glendale racism and Glendale this and years ago, Glendale the other. Was this country any different? I grew up in the segregated South. Was Glendale any different from the rest of the city or this region of Southern California? I've had stories about people in Long Beach, things that went on there, and in the San Gabriel Valley, and in Burbank, and in Pasadena, and everywhere else. So, I mean, to keep talking about Glendale racism as somehow, gee, the rest of the country was this tolerant society where everything was great and everything was wonderful. No, that's not the reality. Whatever went on in this city went on in the rest of Southern California and in the rest of California and in the rest of the nation. So I think it's about time to let that one go, you know? It's this never-ending drumbeat of Glendale this and Glendale that. There were restrictions in Culver City and in Beverly Hills and everywhere else. So anyway, we all have to work together as a society to hit in the right direction, and I think we've been hitting in the right direction for many, many years. But like I say, to keep talking about the past, I've got plenty of stories about other regions of the country where I've lived or served in the military. So that's my opinion on today's, or rather, special session.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Who would like to speak next?
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Weaver?
Why me?
I'm just asking. You don't have to speak and I don't have to...
No, I'd like to speak. I'd like to hear the others first.
All right.
He's been the quietest one.
That's right, I'm the quietest.
I will go to Councilmember Najarian because he is fearless. He just told me that.
I think I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this issue up. It's something that has been floating around, and I think it's important that we, rather than sweep it under the rug, as you said, get onto it and meet it head-on. And what I'm hearing, what I heard today were complaints from just a few people, Mr. Pimental, Ms. Solis, I forget, a few others, Mr., the gentleman who spoke so eloquently, I forget, Mr. Bass or Berry. But three complaints, four complaints don't give me the critical mass that I need to move forward with a police commission. So I would like to continue the process. I need to, whether we're going to do it either by a meeting directed by staff or direct comments to council or to a council meeting, I need to see a critical mass of discontent with the current way that things are working and whether we need to, you know, publicize that in some manner. Until I see what the true issues are in the complaints, it's hard for me to formulate whether we need a commission, whether we need to expand the chief's advisory commission, whether we need to hire an ad hoc inspector general, whether we need to just revise the way the complaints are processed and acted on. So I need, this was a good first step, and I think a good education for all of us. I need to see how, what sort of depth the issues have and the discontent that we do have in our community as far as our police department.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Mr. Yusefian.
I'll tell you where my thought process is. Somebody walks over to me and says, there's a little leak in the dam. I go, well, it's just a little leak. Somebody else comes around and says, oh, it looks like it's gotten a little bit bigger. And I say, I'm going to wait until the dam breaks, then I'll fix it. That's not my mindset. That's what I do as contractor. I see a little short circuit in one room, I go out there, check out the whole panel to see what's going on. Preventive maintenance. Prevent it before it gets worse. In my opinion, we have a fine city, and we have a fine police department. Just like any other police departments, you end up having rookies. You hire them, they're new, because police officers don't live forever and they don't work forever. They work for 30 years, they retire, and they try to collect their retirement, that is, if they don't die too early because of all the stress they were put through for that 30 years. Nevertheless, when you're new to your job, you make mistakes. It's a fact of life. It's no different than in construction than it is in police department. New guy makes a mistake. He's new. So what do you do to deal with that? You do a lot of training, you do so on and so forth. I will tell you one thing. I don't need to have four people in here. All I need is one. I don't even need one. I have my own self-experience. I have my own friends, my own family members, who did not like the way something went down. They may be completely off their rockers, they were completely wrong, and maybe they were oversensitive. Nevertheless, there is an issue. You need to address the issue. You need to have a forum to address the issue. I like to go where our mayor is going. I think the CPAC was a good fresh start. I had a lot more hopes for CPAC, and I will tell you, I've talked to some of the members of the CPAC. And you know what? They feel that it's a do-nothing committee. They show up there, they get their lunch, they're told, this is what we're going to do, thank you very much, we'll see you next quarter. Makes them feel that they have a little badge, they have a little ID, and they're part of the club. That's all it does. In my opinion, we can take some of those members and create a new CPAC or call it something else. I don't know what the name is. Doesn't need to be a police commission, because I have taken time to look at some of the police commissions that are in New York or what it is in Los Angeles. There were 10,000 people working for them. We don't need that. But I think there needs to be a place to have people come and address their issues, that that committee will take that and say, chief, we need this particular thing looked upon. So then the chief will take the opportunity to go back, look at it, and come back the following week, I mean, following month and say, you know, we looked into this and there was nothing there. Or there was something there, we're addressing it. And so this way, we don't end up getting all the emails. We'll still continue to get the emails. But I think there needs to be a next step than what we have taken. It needs to be Brown-acted. It needs to have a meeting every month so people know time and place and date that they can go and address their grievances. That's it. They may be justified, they may not, but we will never know until people have an opportunity to come up and say what they need to say. Now, I think there is a second step to this. I have taken a lot of time, watched the Civil Service Commission. It used to be you could not televise them. Previous council changed that and televised the civil service. So I don't have to come down here to watch them. I can watch them from home. Unlike what Mr. Hoffman said, civil service doesn't have authority to investigate. They don't. Am I right? Am I right?
That's been our opinion and our position that was outlined in the charter.
That is his opinion. And I've talked to some other civil service commissioners, and their opinion is that they do under the charter. And there is a dilemma, and I think they're going to be coming to us and asking the very same question. Do we have a right to investigate or don't we have a right to investigate? My opinion, you already have a police commission, and it's called the civil service. They know all the rules, they know all the regulations, they know what the police bill of rights is and everything else under the sun. All you have to do, you have the wheel, just add a spoke. When it is, when people know that there is a case to be investigated, then the civil service commission can deal with the investigator to make sure it's unbiased. Nobody can point a finger and saying, oh, well, they hired the investigator to skew the documents so it says there's nothing wrong. It's an independent body. It is appointed by city council, and we cannot appeal their decision by us. We can't overturn it. We have to go to court like everybody else. They're the most un-independent body in this city. Have them do that. Two-prong approach, and I think you will solve the minute amount of problems that we have. If we have 60,000 calls and you have 60 problems, still a very small percentage. You have six, still a small percentage. Nevertheless, in my opinion, for this council member, the goal, and same thing for the city chief and the city manager and probably the rest of my colleagues, our goal is zero. That's what we shoot for. We want to have no problem. If you talk to any police officer, they will tell you that's what his goal is, zero. But do we achieve it? Probably not. But at least it's a pretty good goal we should shoot for and do whatever we can to shoot for that. But I agree, Mr. Mayor. I think we should Brown Act this. I think it needs to be composed a little bit differently. And I think we need to come back to discuss that issue. How do we go about it? Do we disband it? Do we use the same people? What the process is going to be? Is it going to be something new? Do we name it differently? I mean, I see that almost most of the wheel is there, it's just a little modification to it. Oh, by the way, the police building, who builds it and who was responsible for it? By the way, that is not something a police commission does. Police commission issue is a police behavior issue, has nothing to do with who builds it and who didn't. That's Mr. Zern's problem.
I guess you're happy about that, Chief, is Mr. Zern's headache.
Pass the buck to Zern.
Yeah, I guess I have a different take. I know that we're the safest large city in the United States of America, over 200,000 population. Says something we must be doing right. That means our police force are doing fantastic job when you consider the per capita ratio, which is lower in Glendale than any other city, yet we can achieve that. That says a lot to me. We sit with a combined force of about 500 sworn and support staff. Los Angeles sits with about 13,000. Yeah, they have a police commission. 13,000 versus 500, and we need to have something to handle all the dastardly deeds that rogue police officers are doing in Glendale. Doesn't come out in the wash at all. Hear about rogue police officers, whatever, we get the police reports every couple of weeks. And quite often, it talks about routine stops. And when they make routine stops, aha, what they discover in the cars, guns, drugs, liquor, contraband, whatever, in routine stops. You're going to tell the police they can't stop anybody for any reason at all. You know how many more crimes are going to actually occur? We get these reports, we read them. It's quite evident what's going on. And the other thing, there's always, always, I've learned in this job, two sides to every story. No matter what I hear here, when I check out the other side, I say, oh, didn't know. People get up here and stand, and both ways tell lies and deceive. Police, nobody else is in a position to be prepared to respond to that person at that time. And what impression does that leave on the worldwide network that these council meetings go to? Oh, my goodness, look how corrupt the city is. Then the reports preparing the background are passed out to us, they don't come back to council, and what do we say? Oh, that's the other side. Oh, that's what happened. So what I've seen, tried to be created, especially in the last few weeks, look at it, many or 12 years I know is set up when I see it. It's been nothing but, okay, now we're picking on the police, leading all up to this. Oh, the police says the police that. What? Come on, it's a setup. Talking about the police building. We sat in closed session, you can't believe how many hours we sat in closed session with PowerPoint presentations, even in closed session, discussing the police building alone. You think the little part that you saw out there in the public, the settlement, whatever, tells you all the details that went on in the building of that building? Absolutely not. So for somebody to extrapolate from seeing an end report and saying, oh, my gosh, the dastardly problem that occurred there, even on the lawsuits, potential lawsuits, whatever, you see the tip of the iceberg. You're never going to see the whole story. It's elected form of government, and that's our job up here. Selected form of government, and that's our job up here, to make those decisions, not the general public as a whole. There's no public outcry for a police commission? I got no emails, no letters, no phone calls, no, nothing. Read the paper. Take your pick, Daily News, LA Times, Lando News Press. Oh, try the Pasadena Weekly. Ask any of them. You see that there's an outcry from the public of Glendale for a police commission in Glendale? No. This is a setup. They tried to orchestrate a change that started clear back of the Charter Reform Commission. There was attempts to take investigative powers and dump them on the Civil Service Commission, taking power away from a city government that had operated for 100 years under a city manager form of government. And give those investigative powers over. Hasn't worked. Now let's try another end run here. Police commission, investigative powers. Civil Service, investigative powers. For what? What are you hunting for? The public isn't out there crying for this? It doesn't exist. So the eyes of new people who get up there and more often than not distort what they tell us. And, wow, we're supposed to buy into it? Today we find out the police chief didn't even take his oath of office. Wowee. We're really dumb up here. You're really reaching out. If you wanna talk about how we are today, police department is absolutely getting better. And I say that, I think about just about every police department in this country. You know why? I know when I got elected in 97, I was still working for a living downtown. I'd come in on Tuesdays, and I might have a little yellow slip there, somebody called me, "Please return the call." Or I'd have a phone message on the, on my machine. One or two max a week. That was before email. Today, any person in the world can contact any one of us. We're inundated with information, technology, our cell phones, our office phones, our emails, letter. Everybody has a much better opportunity to inform us of anything, including the misdeeds of the police department. And as the chief said, when we get the emails, at least I do, that involves helping the police, I automatically forward it over to Randy Adams for him to act on. Always do that. If it's traffic, I send it over to John Bagdarian to work on, or to Steve Zern. Do it every time. Information technology is so improved, and oversight is so much greater now in all the departments, specifically in the police department because of their interaction with the public, it's a totally different culture now. We, we, city attorney's office even has their own legal person situated within the police department group. We have oversight, everything. What more can you ask for? If it's failing, why don't we know it? We don't. It's, this is all manufactured for some mysterious goal out there. Power, control, I don't know, but it's sure evident to this councilman that it's happening. Now, somebody will go out there and say, "Well, Weaver's paranoid again." Uh-uh. I'm not paranoid. I haven't been around here that long not to know what is going on. What it is exactly, I don't know. But it's not warranted, and I won't accept it. Now, if you want to talk about CPAC, opening it up, let's see, the police did it because he wanted to get community input. You open it up and let the public come in. Plus, now we're gonna be Brown acted as long as he's appointing, so that means the public comes in, probably the same ones that come up to the dais here and speak. And here'll be the chief with his command staff, and 25 other people that these individuals will speak to. What a zoo. How are you gonna operate with a command staff, 25 people? Who's running the meeting, how's it organized? Now, you wanna eliminate that and have the city council make political appointments to control it, and then start to head down the path of giving investigative powers to them? I'm not going there. If you want to restructure somehow or open to the public, fine. But you gotta figure out how you're gonna put this structure together so it doesn't get out of control. The chief did it for a specific purpose. If people got gripes, they can call any one of us council members, our cell phones, our emails, office phones, it's all on the internet, it's all here. You can contact us. You can contact the legal department, you can call the city manager. You can go to the police department, you can fill out all the forms in the world. That isn't enough? You need to have CPAC, you need to Brown act it, you gotta have everybody in there screaming bloody mer for a few, few, few minor cases? Uh-uh. This is wrong right from day one. The motivations for this are totally wrong. I don't even care to start down the street. Thank you.
Wowee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Like that comment.
Well, let's try this one on.
Did you say Maui?
I said wowee, although with Mr. Weaver's love of Hawaii, I should've said Maui.
I think that's good.
Mr. Weaver, yes, the process of government is wieldy, unwieldy, and often messy. However, I don't wish to give the public the impression, or deliver the message here on my behalf, that, uh, because the prosecution of local government is sometimes cumbersome, that therefore we're not interested in what the public has to say, that they are all collectively a bunch of yahoos and kooks. So, just for clarification, your mayor is not part of a conspiracy or a setup.
He'll never say that.
I just wanna clarify it. Nor am I the dupe of such a conspiracy. I think it's, it is our job as elected officials to take the comments from the public seriously. It doesn't mean that we don't filter out the, whatever you wanna call them, the people who come with unfounded comments such as we've dealt with today, and we've dealt with over the course of the past couple of weeks, and those such as the writer who simply says, "I'm not getting any responsiveness in my own neighborhood just trying to get some sleep." These are not all big juicy, uh, issues, momentous issues of conspiracy within the department. Sometimes they're very small, normal, frankly, I'm, I'm gonna imagine mostly small, uh, normal quality of life issues. As this writer puts, I thought was very clever, "Maybe Glendale should steal AT&amp;T slogans, more, more bars in more places." I thought that was kind of interesting. Anyway, um, I would support the idea of, of either creating a substitute entity, advisory board, or expanding CPAC out in a way that meets the Brown Act requirements, so that we can have the public come in. I, I don't share the view that creating a public venue in a structured manner so that they can be heard during an oral comment period is somehow tantamount to anarchy. It just isn't, in my view. And, yeah, it is often messy and difficult and, and so on, but that's part of, that's part of what we're supposed to be doing up here. And, uh, so, anyway, that's, that's, I think, the direction I would like to go, or at least I would like to hear more input on, anyway. Um, and, um, I don't know whether that can be done vis-à-vis CPAC, or whether it needs to be done in a different way, but that's what I hope we'll get some input on. Mr. Yusefian makes the analogy to the wheel already existing rather than reinvent the wheel out of spoke. Well, maybe that is the way to go. I, um, I don't know. But I wanna hear some input from, uh, Mr. Howard on how this might work. Uh, I'm not ready to say here today, nope, we're done, we've heard from a couple of people, we've heard from the chief, and, uh, and therefore we've determined there's no need. By the way, I just wanna also shine a light on this, the idea that, yes, we're all very proud that this is an extremely safe city, it's why many of us and our neighbors and friends live in this city and choose to continue living in this city. But I'm not sure the fact that we are, uh, the safest city of, of a particular population means that there are no problems. You know, you could take it to the absurd extreme and say that if we suspended civil rights in the city, that then we'd be an extremely safe city. But I don't think we wanna go that direction either. So, you know, um, I, I'm not sure that there's a nexus there that relates to this discussion. But, and the only other thing I wanna add is, uh, I do share, uh, my colleague, Mr. Quintero's view, that this city has, has changed. This is not the same city I grew up in. No, it wasn't the segregated South, but, uh, many cities in the Southland and across the country had the same kinds of problems and issues that Glendale had. I would say the only slight difference is that few of them had the American Nazi Party headquarters sitting in their city for decades after the Civil Rights Amendment was passed. But nonetheless, we've had our issues in the past, I think it's very clear, if that were the same kind of city then, that, today that we had then, many of us wouldn't be sitting on this dais. So, things have changed, and we do get a bad rap very often for, for things that have occurred in the past. With that, Mr. Yusefian has his answer.
Mayor, so I would like to ask a question. Where do we go from here? Would the city attorney or the city manager come back on another study session with the process of how do we do what you were talking about, or what do we do now? What is, what's the next step?
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, listening to the comments, uh, there are at least three who are interested in looking at, uh, expanding the role of CPAC to achieve some of the objectives you just noted, and at least an additional who was interested in getting more information through some further process. Uh, so I'd suggest that we-
Which three were those?
Uh-
Expand CPAC.
Mr. Quintero, Mr. Draymond, Mr. Yusefian, in some form, and then you'd expressed an interest in continuing with the process, uh, and, uh, looking at, I think you phrased a little more critical mass to see if we had to go down that road. And Mr. Weaver, really not interested. That's at least by my notes. Uh, seems to me there's, there's two things here. One is what could be some alternative roles for CPAC, and both we and the police department legal can work on that. The other one is, everybody has rough, I think everybody has in some way referenced the Brown Act. I think it would be interesting to have the city attorney come back with more information on how you might achieve a more of a public role and process for CPAC, and the implications under the Brown Act. The Brown Act can mean a lot more things than just a place for the public to come speak, and it might be good to get a better understanding of that and how that might fit into some expanded role for CPAC, if that's, if that's your direction.
I just want, I just wanna be clear, I am only interested in expanding the public role for CPAC, meaning the ability for the public to come to, uh, I don't think they're gonna be able to hold it in this, uh, chamber, but, please station wherever it is, to expand the public role, that's it. That's as far as I'm, I'm willing to go on this.
Well, I think one of the concerns is that the way that CPAC is configured, how it is appointed and so forth, may be affected by the fact that once you have the public coming in the door, whether or not they, they, as, as they are, can be a Brown Act-
And does that mean television then?
So, anyway, these are some of the questions that I think need to come back so we get, uh, the answer to Councilmember Quintero on one side, uh, Mr. Yusefian on another. Yes, sir.
No, that's fine. I was, I was going to suggest, time is moving near, you have a closed session at one, but we do have, we do have another study session scheduled for September 8. Uh, I don't know if that gives us enough time, it's about two weeks.
You're not reinventing the wheel.
Well, but it's gonna take some thought as to some of these alternatives and-
The Brown Act issue actually isn't difficult, it's the melding that with the police investigatory and, and their role they have there, and ensuring that there's a way of, through their, the limited closed sessions the Brown Act allows, in assessing that and where the, this committee would be allowed to go into closed session, how they would be structured to be able to accomplish the goals that you have, which is essentially a public forum, but also making sure that the, the role of, the traditional role of police in performing investigative roles, in reviewing some highly confidential issues aren't compromised by that. So it's, it's that balance that I wanna take a look at.
Mr. Quintero.
But that's what I'm saying, I have no interest, I don't believe it's necessary, have no interest in this board doing any investigations of any sort.
Right.
I don't see that at all. We have a Civil Service Commission, we have the Internal Affairs, uh, section of the police department, and that works for me. I think it's worked for the city.
And the reason I make the comment is because we, we need to take a look at the role of CPAC now, what their mission statement is, what they do, and how that would meld in with the public process. We don't, what you don't wanna do is create certain expectations, I think, through a, a revamped CPAC, whether we call it CPAC or something else, create some expectations that certain things are going to happen, so there may be a, a set of new guidelines and regulations that need to be put in place.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I misspoke, it's not September 8, it's September 23rd that we have-
That is-
That would've been the next study session in the series of operational study sessions.
Mr. Yusefian.
What I'm thinking is, correct me if I'm wrong, I would assume that there may be a need for closed session, the scenario will be somebody walks in, uh, talks about something that happened to him, and, uh, the police department will go into closed session with the CPAC and say, "Listen, this item, we know about it, it's already being investigated. Since the investigation's going on, we do not wanna talk about it." So this way, when the same person keeps coming back week after week after week, then the members know what's going on, but nevertheless, the individual is not given sensitive information. Would that be a scenario that will play?
It's a, that's one of the things we have to look at, because closed sessions are limited. Personnel matters, labor relations, litigation anticipated or pending, and just simply using personnel exceptions, generally closed sessions aren't permitted for personnel matters unless it's with the body that has authority over the disciplinary action.
Would, would, then would the police chief be able to tell the members of the CPAC that this is, without going into closed session, that this is being investigated, we can't talk about it?
Yeah, there are things that we can do, and that's why I'd, we'd like to take the time to work with the department and lay those options out for you.
I just wanna interject here, I don't know that there's a consensus to go in any particular direction at this moment. I just want information coming back so, so that we know, we can make a decision as to where or if we will, we will go forward. What Councilmember Yusefian is talking about and alluding to is not at all what Councilmember Quintero is talking about or alluding to, except a public process, a more public process. But, but other than that, I'm not hearing any, any overlap there, so there is, you know-
I'm trying to understand in a public process what can be said-
Right, I'm not making any, any kind of characterization about it one way or the other, I'm just, I am not hearing the same comments, so I wanna be careful that we don't assume that there's consensus here to go any particular direction at this moment, other than we need some more information, and part of it relates to Brown Act issues, um, and the structure that would, would facilitate-
That's what I, that's essentially what I heard.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I, as I see it now, I would anticipate a bit of a continuum. Uh, one is a CPAC with a little bit of adjustment, may not get to where some of you want, but essentially a CPAC-type structure. Other end of the continuum, you, you get closer to something looking more like a formal police advisory board appointed by city council, then the variations in between that'll affect Brown Act and public openness as well as authority of the commission, and try and give you some examples, so you can, the majority of you land where you'd like to at our next meeting. And I think if we do that for the 23rd, that'll give us some time to, to flush out those things.
Um, all right. I don't wanna also forget, there was a suggestion made about this whole process, if there is a, of course, if we go with a, a altered, what shall we call it, CPAC plus, CPAC plus direction, uh, may not be necessary to even consider it, but one of the speakers, I think it was Nancy Kent, proposed the notion, if we go some other way, that perhaps it, it sunset after a period of time, um, that's another possibility we could look at if we happen to go that way. But I think that's premature at this point. I think we need more information. And that's, that is the only consensus I'm hearing at this point.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Um, let me just see if Mr. Howard needs anything else from us at the moment.
I think, unless the city manager needs further direction, I think I've got it.
I agree.
All right. Let me entertain a motion.
Good turn.
Second.
We are adjourned. I wanna thank you all. I want to thank you all.
National Treasure, Book of Secrets, and it will be shown at dusk in Montrose Park. Seating is on the lawn. Beach chairs or blankets are suggested. Admission is free. For information, call John at 548-3785. And skaters can join their friends at Friday Night Lights that evening at Verdugo Skate Park from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. Activities include a skating video and Tony Hawk's Pro Skater Competitions, pizza, and just hanging out. For more information, call Adam Porte at 548-2786. The Glendale Parks Department is hosting an End of the Summer Campfire Extravaganza on Saturday, August 30th, at Duquesne Wilderness Park. The program begins at 6:30 p.m. in Outdoor Amphitheater. Come celebrate National Marshmallow Toasting Day and National Trail Mix Day by creating a marshmallow sculpture, learning trail safety tips, singing songs, and enjoying the campfire itself. Participants are encouraged to bring a batch of their favorite trail mix for the Trail Mix Food Challenge. Admission is free. Call Jeff Weinstein at 548-2000 if you want more details. That's it for this time. Thanks for joining us, and we'll see you next week.
Inspector Litter here at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, where children from throughout Glendale are pouring in to be recognized for their posters at the 15th Annual I Love My Neighborhood Poster Contest, depicting the theme "I Am the Pollution Solution." One of 52 finalists will be recognized as the grand prize winner later.
Each of us wants to live in a clean, safe city that has a healthy environment, that has no graffiti and no litter. The point and purpose of our poster contest is to teach that lesson, that each one of us is personally responsible to make our city better in all of these ways.
Can you tell us a little bit about your poster?
Um, well, there's a whole bunch of smiley faces on it that represents everybody.
And you have Litter Knot and Inspector Litter, and you have the theme, and it's a beautiful poster.
This event is particularly nice because it does involve the whole community and involves the young people. Their posters are creative, and the support they get from their teachers and parents is a joy to see.
We're here with the fifth place winner of the I Love My Neighborhood Poster Contest, Rachel Kim from Verdugo Woodlands Elementary. Hi, Rachel.
Hi.
Did you enjoy the poster contest ceremony today?
Um, yeah, but I was a little nervous, but I guess it was okay.
You were a little nervous. Did you think you were gonna be a finalist?
Um, no.
Were you excited to be one today?
Yes.
Thank you very much for participating.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you join me in congratulating an outstanding private school participant, a school that I also attended, Shama Leon Armenian School?
Are you excited to be here for the ceremony?
Yes.
And can you tell us a little bit about your poster?
It's about a girl that is riding a scooter to not, like, make pollution, and a donkey that is putting water for the tree so it can grow and make the land more cleaner. And it's about butterflies cleaning and these making the air cleaner. Um, it's about, like, a man that is getting dirty things from the water.
Wow, you put a lot into this poster. How long do you think it took you to complete?
Almost, um, three days.
Wow.
It is clear that the environmental education is being taught and received in the school. Please join me in congratulating three public schools, Mountain Avenue, John Fremont, R.D. White Elementary School.
Are you excited to be here today?
Yes.
Behind us, we have essays from First Lutheran School. Do you two believe that these essays are a valuable way to teach the children about civic responsibility and neighborhood pride?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for them to explore their city and to look around out there in their environment and to look around and see how they can help to make our city a fine city.
Exactly. And did you enter students in the poster contest this year?
Yes, I entered all my students from First Lutheran School. All of them participated in this year contest.
Beautiful.
The 2008 I Love My Neighborhood Poster Contest...
Did you have any idea that you would be a finalist?
Well, I thought that I would have a chance.
You would have a chance. Well, your poster looks excellent. Can you describe some of the top banners and the signs?
Okay. Well, this girl says, "Oh, fresh air. I hope it stays this way." She's saying that we should ride bikes instead of riding cars and driving cars, so, because there's gas in it and it makes our sky all foggy and disgusting. We don't want that. And over here, it's Litter Knot, and he's just walking around, and there's a recycle bin where you can throw trash away. And this is the motto, "I Am the Pollution Solution." And it says over here, "Keep Your Home Clean," which is Glendale.
So, this is our home, exactly. And do you do your part in recycling and not littering?
Yes, I have two trash cans. One is for, um, one is for glass, and one is for paper, and we sort those out.
Beautiful. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you.
And our third place finalist is Emily Kang from Locker Center Elementary School. Congratulations, Emily. Congratulations, Emily. This year's second place finalist, Helene Verhuyen. The 2008 grand prize winner of the I Love My Neighborhood Poster Contest, "I Am the Pollution Solution,"
Tenny Amadian.
Tenny Amadian from Armenian Sisters Academy is our 2008 grand prize winner. Congratulations, Tenny. So, were you surprised to learn that you were the grand prize winner?
Yeah, I was really surprised. I'm just really happy right now.
Good, thank you very much, Tenny. And congratulations again to all the finalists.
We're here with the grand prize winner, Tenny Amadian from the Armenian Sisters Academy. What grade are you in, Tenny?
I am in fourth grade.
Fourth grade. You have a fantastic poster. Did you think you would be the grand prize winner?
Oh, well, yeah, I was very proud of my poster.
You were very proud. You think, you knew you'd be top 10, but you didn't know you'd be the very, very first, did you?
Yeah.
You did?
No, I thought I'd be one of the top 10.
What did other kids in your class think of your poster when you finished it?
Well, they all liked my poster very much. They supported me a lot.
That is beautiful. And this was done in all marker?
Marker and crayon.
Marker and crayon. Well, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, that wraps up another successful I Love My Neighborhood Poster Contest Award Ceremony. For more information on this or any other Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale program, please call Neighborhood Services at 818-548-3700, or visit us online at www.nsci.glendale.ca.us. For Neighborhood Services Television, I'm Inspector Litter.
Thanks, Inspector Litter, and thank you to all of Glendale's elementary school students who participated in our 15th Annual I Love My Neighborhood Poster Contest. You did a fantastic job showing all of us how to be a pollution solution. Keep up the good work.
Great job. Being mindful of all the things you can do to keep your neighborhood clean and beautiful year-round is very important, and it helps all who live, work, and conduct business in Glendale enjoy a high quality of life.
You can say that again. And as important as it is to take care of your own neighborhood, it is also important to be mindful of maintaining the quality of life inside your home, too. As Neighborhood Services Inspector Renee Sada will now show us, something as simple as having functional smoke alarms can make a world of difference.
Hello, Neighborhood Services Inspector Renee Sada here with some vital information on smoke alarms and their maintenance. There are approximately 2.6 million residential fires per year across the U.S., and an average of three children die in those fires daily. Ninety percent of those deaths occur in homes without working smoke alarms. Fire experts estimate that at least one in three homes have inoperable smoke alarms. Having inoperable smoke alarms can have serious, even fatal, consequences. Homeowners and landlords are required to provide functional smoke alarms in sleeping rooms and central locations. Making sure that the batteries are working is your responsibility as an occupant. Having a working smoke alarm in your home may save your life and the lives of your loved ones. Following these simple guidelines can help make your home safe. Test your alarm monthly. Change your clock, change your battery. Make it a habit to change smoke alarm batteries when you change your clocks back to standard time each fall. Never disconnect or remove batteries from your smoke alarm. Every smoke alarm comes with a homeowner booklet which describes how to use and take care of that particular alarm. You should read that booklet and keep it in a safe place for future reference. Replace your entire smoke alarm unit every 10 years. One smoke alarm is probably not enough. To maximize the efficiency of your smoke alarms, it is recommended that you have an alarm in each bedroom and outside the bedroom area, close enough to be heard through closed doors and at least one alarm per level. Remember that the smoke alarm is there for your protection. It can even save your life. If you are a renter and your unit does not have working smoke alarms, make arrangements with your landlord so that they may be installed immediately, or contact Neighborhood Services at 818-548-3700 if you need assistance. For NSTV, I'm Renee Sada.
Thanks, Renee. Now that we have the facts about smoke alarms, we can all make sure our homes and loved ones are protected.
Well, it's time for a quick break. Don't go anywhere, because we'll be right back with more NSTV.
Inspector Litter, on patrol at the skate park. You're trash?
Yeah, who are you?
Inspector Litter, I talk trash. Nobody wants to live in a city with trash all over the place, right?
Right.
Don't trash Glendale. You're trash?
Yeah, who are you?
Inspector Litter, I talk trash. Nobody wants to live in a city with trash all over the place, right?
Right.
Don't trash Glendale.
And now, back to NSTV.
Welcome back. Now, we have a special segment about how a group of dedicated volunteers chose to be a part of the pollution solution. Sometimes, we just have to roll up our sleeves and do some of the dirty work, like picking up litter and painting over graffiti.
The 20th Annual Great American Cleanup this past May was the place to be if you wanted to clean up, fix up, and green up Glendale. Let's join Jason Webb, special guest correspondent Elena Bobolian, and over 500 volunteers at this year's event.
Hi, I'm Elena Bobolian. On special assignment for NSTV, today, we're coming to you from the 20th Anniversary Celebration of the Great American Cleanup. For the past two decades, volunteers have been coming together to make the Jewel City sparkle.
So, Elena, how many years have you been a part of the Great American Cleanup?
Well, Jason, I've been part of this event for 13 out of the 20 years. This event has come a long way. Even today, we have two new projects. I'll be covering one of them. Leadership Glendale and 50 local high school students have partnered together, and we'll be planting 28 trees along Verdugo Road.
Wow, and joining us also is ASL Recycling, who will be helping us host an electronic waste recycling drive. The party's about to start, so let's see what's going on stage. After the rally, I'll be heading out to the L.A. River, where over 200 volunteers will be helping to pick up trash and cover graffiti. Let's go.
Welcome to the Great American Cleanup. This is our 20th Anniversary Event, and we're very excited to have you here.
Two and a half million people around the country are doing the same thing to clean up their communities. So, let's give yourselves a big round of applause for today.
City of Glendale has been a recipient of the national award for the past four years, and most of it is thanks to all of you and our sponsors. So, I want to thank all of you for coming. Welcome, have a great day.
Our gold-level sponsors for today are Lakeside Medical Associates, DreamWorks Animation, Jewel City Quanis, who's providing the food for today. You'll see some people walking around in shirts that say "Volunteers." They're from the Walt Disney Company. They are platinum-level sponsors. The Home Depot, they help us provide supplies for this event. The Glendale Water and Power Department, Public Works Department, Lexus of Glendale, and the Glendale News Press.
Here at the 20th Anniversary of the Great American Cleanup, we're at the L.A. River with Arti Kosakian. How do you feel today?
Feel good. It's really hot out here, but it's great to be out here with all these kids and all these community people that are just helping paint out graffiti.
Well, it looks like you guys are doing a wonderful job covering up a lot of graffiti in a short amount of time. Have you done this before? Is this your first year volunteering?
You know, the first time I did it, I was actually a student at Glendale High School.
Wow.
Senior, and I've let a couple of years go by. I haven't done it, but this year, I decided to come out because all across L.A., you're actually seeing an increase in graffiti. There's a heightened activity of tagging crews. Yanning activity is up, and anytime those activities go up, you see more graffiti. And I tell all my friends who drive around L.A., they've cut all their budgets for graffiti paintout. But when you come into Glendale, you know you're in Glendale because there's no graffiti. And there's no graffiti because of the hard work of these people coming out here under this hot sun, 90-plus-degree weather to paint it out.
That's exactly right. Well, thank you and all the volunteers in your group for doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
As you can see, there's lots of work to be done. With us here is a volunteer leader, Steven Cozes. Steven, this is your first time at the Great American Cleanup. How's it feel?
It feels great. I'm happy to be here with all these energetic volunteers.
Feels great. I'm happy to be here with all these energetic volunteers from Unum. They're out here, all up and down the Levitts Building here, and we've got probably about 30 people. It's awesome. It's a little hot, but we're doing a good job.
Wow, it looks like you guys are doing very good work, and we'll catch up to you later back at lunch. Have a good day.
Thanks, man. Thank you very much.
How do you feel out here cleaning up all this graffiti on the Levitts Building?
Well, other than being really hot, it's great to know that you're out here helping to clean up the community.
We have today 29 people with us, including myself. The boys and girls of Aria just painted the wall and the slope on the LA River.
I think it's fabulous to bring kids to an event like this, because they get an idea of what damage people can do to a neighborhood. They get an idea of what they can do for their community, and also, especially when we get parents and children to come out, they get to work together, and they see the value of doing something good. They get to spend time to do it.
There's a great deal of benefit to be gained from participating in community events such as this. We're happy to bring our kids and teach our kids to be valuable citizens of this city. This is our 4th year.
For the Glendale Police Explorers, they've been doing this every year since it started. For myself, this is about my 5th year, and I've been an officer now for about five years with Glendale. This is a great opportunity for our kids to come out and just get back to the community, cover up some, you know, terrible graffiti that people throughout the city of LA and Glendale have to see when they drive on the 5 freeway here. The kids, this is probably one of the best things that they do all year. They really enjoy doing it. They're excited to come out. Every year, we never have someone that says, "No, I can't come." They really enjoy doing it.
Hey, Francisco, how do you feel today?
Good.
Are you having fun painting over graffiti?
Yes.
Do you think it's important to be painting over all this messy, dirty graffiti?
Yes.
Do you think it's important to bring children out here for an event like this?
Oh, yeah. This teaches them that they'll have some respect for some people's property. And when they see all this graffiti, I just hope that they don't ever take this up. It's just terrible blight on the neighborhood.
Exactly. Well, thank you and your Boy Scout troop for coming out here and doing a wonderful job.
Okay, we're from Al Hamra, Troop 201.
Ron, did you have an excellent day today?
Oh, absolutely. We had a great time. Had a great crew. We ruined a lot of graffiti, and we had a great time.
Awesome. Well, I hope to see you here next year, knocking it out.
Absolutely. I look forward to this every year.
I'm here with Greta Miller, one of my classmates from the Leadership Glendale Class of 2008. So, Greta, how did this project get started?
Well, about seven months ago, Leadership Glendale Class began, and one of our graduation requirements is to do a service project in the community. We came up with a beautification project involving high school kids, getting them to come out and volunteer their time and help us with the project. We worked very closely with some of the city departments, including Public Works, along with Neighborhood Services. Glendale Water and Power has been wonderful. They sponsored the purchasing of all of these amazing trees for us. Part of our goal was to make sure the kids had an opportunity to do something that they could feel proud of, and nothing better than planting some life, planting some trees in the community.
Greta, can you tell everybody a little bit about Leadership Glendale?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Leadership Glendale is a class that's put together through the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. Essentially, it's a group of community leaders that come out from different businesses and different organizations to participate in this eight-month course. What it takes to run a city efficiently and effectively, just gets them a sense of civic responsibility, and what it means to really be a part of a community and to give back. So, it's been an incredible experience, I think, for us all to be involved, and hopefully acquire some of the leadership skills necessary throughout the course to implement the project.
As part of this tree planting project, students from the local high schools were recruited to help out. I had a chance to speak with the student body presidents of Hoover and Glendale High School to find out why they decided to participate. I'm here with Denise Lee. She's the ASP president for Hoover High School, my alma mater. So, Denise, why are you guys out here today?
We're out here essentially for the team unity building that it really brings. We love volunteering, and it's been a project for the Student Advisory Council, which is selected members from each of the four ASPs in Glendale, and we've been planning it for the past couple of months to really bring our schools together and stop the animosity, and make sure that we all know how to cooperate and work together really well. And Hoover loves to go into the community and really give something back. And I mean, five years from now, we're all going to come back, and we're going to see that, you know, that's a tree that we built together, something that gives back to the community, brings us air, brings us together.
On heat, why are tree plantings important?
Well, essentially, I'm just going to say, our shirts say that he who plants a tree plants hope, and I absolutely believe in that. We have so many, we cut down so many trees, and we use it for absolutely no reason. Two papers that we don't need, we throw away, we waste, and we don't recycle. So, planting trees is just another way for us to give back to the community, to actually feel that we do something back and not just take from our nature.
If this sounds interesting to you, and you may want to join the next class of Leadership Glendale, contact the Chamber of Commerce at 818-240-7870. Once the tree plantings were completed, the students gathered at Partridge Plaza to tell us what they took away from today's tree plantings.
And it came out absolutely fantastic. You guys did such a great job. Give yourselves a round of applause.
Actually planting the trees, we all learned was actually pretty fun, and a lot harder process than we all thought.
I actually love jumping on the dirt to make sure there weren't any air pockets.
I thought it was really cool that we all came together for a common cause, and it was pretty cool that we were competing to see how many trees we could get done. I liked that.
All of you did a great thing for the community today, and thank you so much for spending your Saturday here at the Great American Cleanup.
We're back for the lunchtime activities, but before you can grab a hot dog, let's talk to some of the volunteers and find out how their morning went. Stephen led the Unum group at the Levitts Building. So, Stephen, how did it go today?
Today was great. We had about 25 or so volunteers, plus some of their family members, and we did a paintout across two walls there and took out a lot of graffiti. They have about 200 or so members in their Glendale office here on Central, and they were really happy to be out at the graffiti paintout and Great American Cleanup today.
I really enjoyed this project, because starting from the very beginning, there's all these people from the Glendale community coming together, young, old, teenagers, everyone, and it was really nice, working together and just being in an outdoor environment, doing something good for the community, instead of just talking about global warming and stuff, actually doing something to help our community.
I just thought today was really fun. It was hard work, under the sun, really tiring, but we planted a bunch of trees, and we made a difference, just one tree at a time.
Today, I really enjoyed the Great American Cleanup. It was my first time. It was really fun, because we got to experience, like, life as an arborist, and we got to plant a lot of trees, and I watered practically all of them with the other group. It was a really amazing experience today, because such little things we do can help the community so much, and we made a lot of new friends that we've never seen before, and it was really great meeting new people and helping the community.
I had a really good time today. I thought it was really important that, after living here my whole life, to go out there and make a difference in my community, and see how things grow and come to be in Glendale.
Why is it important for corporate groups stationed in Glendale to participate in such an event?
I think it's important for them to participate in a group like this, so that they can take pride in the community that they work in.
It was nice to give back to the community, and what I got out of it, how much can be done together as a team, and we had a good time.
We work here every day. All of us are here every day, and being part of the community. So, it's nice to kind of make it look nicer. It's very hot today, but we got the job done.
Now that the hard work is done, let's go to Sam Mingle for the Presentation of the Hometown Hero Award.
From my perspective, this is a man who cares greatly about our community and is committed to the well-being of our neighborhood. Please join me in congratulating this year's Hometown Hero, Mr. David Schultz.
Thanks, Elena, and thanks to all the volunteers at the 20th Anniversary Great American Cleanup.
This event is only one of the many ways you can participate and give back to your community. For more information on this event or any other...